All right, do you see the one that says "Meeting"? Because it's not, Roqual's the old one. This was, I looked at this earlier.
You sure it ain't the Roqual?
Roqual's the old one.
That's the old one.
That's the old one, right?
Mine won't even connect.
I thought it was supposed to say "Meeting". I thought it was right in here.
Is this Frank's?
Yes. Try the one that says "Meeting Manager"? Maybe Roqual Meeting Manager.
That doesn't look right.
No, that's the old one.
Were you in it earlier today?
I came over here today and it was...
Was it, is it Meeting Manager here?
Oh, there it is. How did I not see that? I'm so sorry. Oh, I thought it was red. Oh, right here.
Okay, there we go.
That's why it looks... I'm sorry, I've got a million notes.
That's all right.
Are we gonna call Roqual again?
Yeah, we have to call Roqual.
But does he stop there?
Well, see, what you do is you turn that on up there and everybody signs in.
Okay. So, will I start meeting? It's right when you say, when you do the dabbles?
Right, you go ahead and bring everybody's names up and they will come in.
Are you gonna help start?
Yeah. Now, he's Roqual.
Like this one made sure I didn't just come down. Oh, wait until I have to be present.
You said I actually must.
I have to be present.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not showed up yet.
This series, you have to read something.
Thanks you got it here, hope it's good play.
And it's on green now, it was red. But this is...
Heard it's now getting every mighty out. But would you...
Oh, yeah.
Pretty much all here to sign in and this one is okay. First off, we'll say if they don't give you any money, you know how? It's still hard. So, I think that's all. I mean, I come to both for both. The main thing is starting to happen.
Yeah, I think some of the late ones.
Yes, it is. But they always seem to want things. Now, that's your copy of our list, which is not.
Okay.
But you've got a copy of our list where everything is going on. Pushing my tire out of the air and the gears and staying long. But you still have to try to watch this. Now, who? What's about the three? Three noses, all you stand.
Well, I think the parents have been hurt and I've been moved. I just almost like you have to display. I need to have it displayed. I think you have to say this.
I don't have to say it, it seems a lot of my decisions, I'm not saying it. It's still not... All my actions are normally used, normally up and down. Good.
I mean, it's not a good idea. They're looking at one.
They have to eat and dinner. shady. Martin. 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 Martin, they're driving.
I never knew another story you'd do that. I love it. I think you should go. You should go to that. I don't know. It wasn't very good, right? Do you know where his major? I think it's a major, but I don't know. Do you know where his team's from? Yep. That's nice.
There we go. We're all working. We're all working.
And I don't gotta get back to the...
Commissioners, please sign in. Uh-oh, what might I? We can do it, I spoke, we can fix it.
What's, what's not working?
I'll be there. He is there. Well, it's, well, it's come off this train, man. Well, what about the old man, he keeping him straight?
I'm trying, Sam.
Crack a way up, all I can say is crack a way up.
Can we like the candy?
Yeah, you know, for so long, I didn't know they used Mary's.
Oh, yeah. Can I live for? Maybe.
It's okay, it's okay. He's got a totally different idea. He's like, you know. He's not interested in stuff. He's got, okay. What's, what's the obvious? What's the... Just got that third file, that's what I need to do. I'm a boy, please be more mindful of that. You know, what happened to life making a fine catch next year?
Yeah, that was...
That was totally just a tale, wasn't it? Well, this is... I think, yeah, isn't that kind of a good start? Yeah. I know. When he sit there and I, I knows how to do part of it. He said, "That's the thing that I know how to do". And Frank, you kept doing it over and over again, the time it worked. But it was a different part, it was a different part. But you know, you're there. I think that's what I'm trying to do. You catch them and say, "Man, we have to move now". I think it's pretty much... All you windblowers. We're gonna go old school here if we can't fix it the next little bit.
I guess it's good at work.
Oh, it's neat when it works. No more than what we got, we could hand do. As long as they don't get long drawn out and be a bunch of stables.
And you catch them, they...
Ah, worse than that, hey, nobody talking right now and the ones that want they do something, I don't even...
I'm sorry, I feel... Does, I don't think they do that.
Yep. Hey, bye. Better than this, this. Oh. I think you need to do two. Or I hope so. I'll just not end. You must go, you never... A large day.
I'm ready to kind of...
That is never hurt. Ah, never hurt. So, our address is the ground.
Yeah, I'm not sure what I'm gonna say.
Yeah, it's bad. So, it's all... You know Jimmy Dale's show there?
I guess they like the mountain. I don't know, but I'm just trying to... I just say it.
I don't like how many people's in here. Your number six can tell you I'm number three. A lot of it. It ain't really... And they almost, almost there. I see it's Jimmy Dale hook up. Your kid made. They just, they didn't... He said, "He's just getting on the turf". That's being careful, he's gonna miss this, mate.
They shot.
They working at it. He can't make this up. I ain't got words.
Can I tell where you're going?
Would like to call this meeting to order, the Jefferson County Board of Commissioners, special call meeting. And, uh, we'd like to call the roll. All you needs the numbers. How many, how many people you got present?
Okay.
Fourteen.
Fifteen, fifteen present, six absent.
Fifteen present, six absent. Would everyone please stand for the prayer led by Mr. Marcus Reed and remain standing for the pledge led by Mr. Sammy Solomon?
Father, Creator, we come before you with a grateful heart, thanking you for the county that we live in. And what I've all around this foreman, I see some of the finest employees that you can find anywhere in this state that represent every spectrum of the ones who serve the citizens of this county. I thank you for the sheriff's department, for the police department, for all the emergency services, 911, fire, ambulance. For what I thank you for the volunteers that represent all things that help bring us together as a county and to keep us safe. I thank you for those who work within the offices, within the court system. For as the commission, we're so blessed to have the caliber of people that work for us and take care of us and serve us and serve our citizens. And help us for real, God, that we need also to take care of them and if we make decisions that we need to reflect upon what we're doing. God, a special request to you is to protect our men and women who are serving in uniform or society. Lord, I know what it's like to be OEDH, to be waiting for that moment. I pray that you will keep them safe. I pray out for our country, Lord. And Lord, as Americans, help us to understand that we need to be prepared or that we can't pay everything for everybody. Help us to stay strong, help us to come together as a nation, Lord. Lord, you've done so much for us and you called out those who believe to serve you. And I'm so grateful, God, that I'm an American and I live in Jefferson County. I thank you with all my heart for the people that are up here with me. Leaders of our county, help us to take it serious. Help us to examine ourselves with every decision that we make. Help us to walk up life before you, God. If we truly believe in you, we will want to serve you and will take the moral courage to do what's right. And as always, Lord, I thank you for your grace and mercy without it, so many of us could be lost. These things I pray for your presence, son, Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, your unique son. And I pray for peace and removal, Lord. These things I lift up in your holy name.
Amen. I teach you some light. Play.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like to welcome everyone out this evening. Uh, next we have appearance of citizens. I haven't received any requests to speak. Is there anyone here that would like to address the commission? Not hearing any, we'll move right along. We have before you, uh, notaries and bonds for approval. We need to move forward. Hang on just a second here, we got a little ditch.
Notaries and bonds.
Should be in the next senior. Notaries. Should put it up for vote.
Discuss.
Vote, hit vote. But he don't vote. Or he don't wanna do that.
There we go, have to hit discuss first and vote.
Question or comment? Not hearing any, we will proceed to vote. Now we gotta get vote. Fifteen yes, zero no, passes. Next we have new business, there is none. Next we have resolutions. First resolution, twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four appropriations, nonprofit organizations, FY twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. We have a motion on the floor by Austin Brooks, a second by Ransom Douglas. Zero requests to speak, we will proceed to vote. Fourteen yes, zero no, wanted to stand, pass. Whoops, wrong spot. Next we have resolution, twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five appropriations, various departments, FY twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. We have a motion on the floor being properly seconded, we will vote. Jimmy Dale. We have fifteen yes, zero no, passes. Next we have resolution, twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six, fixing the tax levy at one dollar and forty-nine cents, FY twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Zero requests to speak, we'll proceed to vote. Thirteen yes, two no, passes. Next we have resolution, twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven, lease of business machines, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. We have motion on the floor being properly seconded, we'll proceed to vote. Fifteen yes, zero no, passes. Next we have budget amendments. Budget committee chairman.
All of these passed in the budget committee, we had it five o'clock, so you can either take them all at once, right? You want to do it?
What's the pleasure of the commission? You wanna, yes, there's, as long as there's no fund balance.
There is, you could pull down.
And, and a couple of them, okay, you gonna have to pull them out, which ones are they?
We'll have to pull out, I believe it's Fund 116 and Fund 207.
So noted. Okay, here's what we gotta do, you will be voting on Fund 101-13, 101-14, 114-1, together. It will be the first three and 131, number four, is what you'll be voting on. We have motion on the floor being seconded, proceed to vote. Fifteen yes, zero no, passes. Next we have 116, number three, we'll be taking it by itself, does it fund balance? I don't know how you're gonna do that. Here we go, proceed to vote. Fifteen zero. And last we'll have 207, number five, proceed to vote. We have fifteen yes, zero no's, passes. Next we have school amendments, Fund 141, number seventeen, there's just four, so we'll take them each one.
None of them use fund balance.
Okay, we can take them all together.
Take them all.
That works. Proceed to vote. Fifteen zero, passes. Okay, and announcements, just be sure to remember that we will be advertising the new schedule for July. And, uh, pay attention, cause there won't be a work session. Sirs, Austin, you first.
I was just gonna make the announcement that the Chestnut Hill Fire Department has their charity horse show this Friday and Saturday night.
All right, anybody else?
Ask Marcus if he don't care and if it's appropriate. Um, an officer I work with is laying in the hospital, uh, fighting for his life right now, I was gonna see if we could do a prayer for him before we leave.
Sure.
His name's Dalton Swinger. He was hit in the head by a brick, um, on duty and he's in critical care right now. Do you care to do a prayer for us?
Do a prayer?
Yeah.
What's his name again?
Dalton Swinger.
I have to put that in the minutes.
On the word from, what I know, I come to you quite frequently for people that I care about, people that I love, even people like this one, and I pray for them. What I pray for is this man, Dalton, Lord, you know exactly where he's at in his life, because I believe, Lord, that you ordained our life, that you put every step in front of us, that you guide us through every path, the good and the bad. And I pray that if it's in your will, God, that you would completely heal him and that he would have no type of disability from what has happened. But God, when your son Jesus prayed in the garden and he prayed so hard because he didn't wanna do what he knew he had to do, but he followed your will completely, so I pray that it is your will that healed this person. And I pray that you would be with the family and give them strength and understanding for that he was affected before he did. And we just trust in you, God, for everything. There's nowhere else to judge it but to you. I pray that the word remains with you. We just give this up to you, God. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
That concludes this meeting, does anyone have anything? Mr. Jim?
Sorry. Yeah, let me read this, just, just a couple of comments, I'm really surprised it was as quiet as it was here tonight, but overall, it seems this increase for the third year in a row was unavoidable, uh, to some level. Uh, we knew last year's increase would barely cover this year's budget costs and needs, uh, let alone any increase for COLAs, wages, insurance, or just general cost of goods and services was typically three percent increase annually. I guess I, I would've liked to have seen our budget committee dig in a little deeper in the, on the 101, rather than just pass it almost seems blindly, without any questions, any in-depth review, at least take an opportunity to get what can be, what can be got, what can be got. But, uh, anyway, that part's pretty disappointing. Um, now coming up, uh, we've got, um, find some reduction opportunities, oh, we're absolutely gonna big up against another tax increase next year. So, with this increase, we're gonna have about a net gain of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars beyond what we're going to spend. If you consider a COLA increase at two point five percent, that's another, about another five hundred thousand dollars increase, you take another three percent increase in general cost of goods and services, and you throw in some insurance, which is about fifteen percent increase for this fiscal year, we're gonna be in the hole another five hundred to seven hundred thousand dollars starting out next year. So, there's two ways to, to cover that. One is, is I would request everyone look as hard as you can to reduce costs or spend money to avoid future costs. So that may be some capital investment to head off costs over the next three to five year period. And certainly we gotta increase revenue. We need to be, as a county commission group, extraordinarily focused on getting this short-term rental policy pushed through, which could cover a significant amount of those increase. Those aren't things we can avoid, what I mentioned, those are things we must do as a bare minimum. And we also probably need to take another look at the mineral tax as well. We need revenue, okay? And the longer term project is our whole rezoning efforts too, to make it more business-friendly for this county in order to generate revenue. Thank you.
Sammy Solomon, you?
Sure.
This has to do with our next meeting, since it's different, can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
Here, okay, one, so we usually get our packets on Friday, which our meeting, our voting meeting will be the following Monday, so question, will we still get our packets on Friday or will they be available earlier, since that doesn't even leave a full business day, if we need to research something? So I guess I'm requesting, is there any possibility we could get that earlier? And also, so, because I know several citizens request that too, because it doesn't give them time really to see what's on our agenda either. And I don't really know how this will work, will we go straight into voting or will we have a discussion first? Like a work session first before the voting session? Just a couple of questions.
Mayor, do you wanna address?
The rules and guidelines have parameters when you don't have a work session defined in the program. Off the top of my head, I think it's for business things, that have work sessions and packages. Anything that's, uh, the chair puts on the agenda, gets on the agenda, however, you can suspend the rules and add something to the agenda at this meeting, so, it's been for a good, I believe in that, so if something comes up, you can suspend the rules and make that out, not have a work session. But I'm, I'm not very sure, I started writing that, I don't have a minute, you may have a minute, but rules and guidelines, like you do not have a work session, I think it's for business things.
My understanding, the paperwork will be turned in from department heads at the same time that it has been?
Yeah, usually we like to take it late, late, uh...
Right.
If the package is in four days, you may move it on, during, during that, but it may be a deadline that we have to afford. If you look at those guidelines, whatever your rule says, unless you change rules, it's all what your rule is.
Is that rules of procedure, what is that rule?
Rules of procedure.
Yep.
If it defines if you have a special, if you have a work session first, if you don't have a work session first.
And to answer your question about during the meeting, it can be, the vote can be put off as long as you have it in that time of that meeting. So you can have a conversation about something and put it later on in the meeting for a vote. We'll cover that, yeah. Anyone else? Mr. Solomon has made a motion to adjourn. Got a second, just made.